Good afternoon, everybody. We'd like to call the City Council meeting for March 10th, 2020 to order. Will the clerk please call roll to establish quorum?
Thank you, Councilwoman Ashby.
Here.
Councilwoman Warren.
Here.
Councilmember Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Chenier.
Here.
Councilmember Guerra.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Here.
And Vice Mayor Harris.
Thank you very much. I am present as well. And Councilmember Hanson, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Madam Clerk, do you have announcements?
I do not have any announcements on the consent calendar.
Okay, did you want to... Oh, you read that at public comment.
Correct.
All right, very well. Do we have a report out from closed session? Madam Attorney?
At this time, the Council gave direction to resolve a workers' comp case, but there's nothing to report at this time.
Very good, thank you. So, our first item would be consent, and I understand we have public speakers.
I have six speakers on item number 10. The first is Paul Andrews, Robert Copeland, and then LB. Is Paul Andrews here? Okay. Following Paul Andrews is Robert Copeland and LB.
Hi. I provided some articles and a research paper to the clerk. I stand in opposition to the proposed purchase of a military vehicle for the local police. I'd like to enter these two articles into the record. The two articles are from PBS in Princeton, and they summarize the study. It's attached as well. The study from 2018 found that police militarization neither reduces rates of violent crimes or changes the number of officers assaulted or killed. This study includes 9,000 law enforcement agencies in the U.S. The study found that merely seeing militarized units can erode public confidence in law enforcement and give off the impression that a police department is overfunded. You can't simultaneously claim to need to raise taxes to pay for the police while buying ridiculously expensive equipment for the police. There's a disconnect there. In Maryland, where they had very detailed SWAT information due to an earlier unfortunate incident, it was found that 92% of SWAT missions were used to execute search or arrest warrants, and that only 5% involved barricades which are meant for handling armed suspects. The researcher found that predominantly black areas witnessed more of these SWAT deployments than white neighborhoods, but this happened even in the areas that had low rates of crime. Every 10% increase in the number of African-Americans living in an area corresponded with a 10% increase in SWAT deployments per 100,000 residents. The researcher also surveyed 6,000 people on their feelings towards law enforcement after seeking... seeing mock news articles about a police chief looking for a budget increase. In some, a photo showed normal gear; in others, militarized gear. If they saw militarized photos, they were more likely to perceive the city as being violent and lost confidence in policing, with support from black participants being 21 percentage points lower than white respondents. The respondent's support for funding for law enforcement fell by four percentage points with police militarization photos, and their desire for police patrols took a 3% hit. This came after a single exposure to militarized images. Researchers noted that...
Thank you for your comments. Your speaking time is complete.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Our next speaker is Robert Copeland, then LB.
I really didn't want to come to the City Council meeting anymore, but you forced my hand. I was going to be here because of this and another item later on. Why are we having armored vehicle? I mean, when was the last time a cop got injured by a pedestrian in a riot? I don't... The people are more likely to get injured than the cops are, and we're not asking for armored vehicles. Military vehicles? I can't... No way. I think this should be a separate boat and not on consent. I'd like to hear a reason why we need an armored vehicle. I can tell a lot more ways we can spend the money, like libraries, mental health services, housing, toilets, rest, trash pickup. This is one of the worst things we can do. Are you making a city safer with this vehicle? I don't think so. I mean, really? I'd like to see how each and every City Council member votes on this one issue. Thank you.
Next speaker is LB, then David Andre. Is LB here? David Andre? Following Mr. Andre is Khalil Ferguson.
Hello, City Council. I haven't been coming here either, and the reason I haven't been coming here is because we scream for funds for warming centers. We scream for funds for public toilets. Now, you're rethinking that now with the COVID-19, huh, that we're tracking fecal material into your precious City Council rooms? Yet $400,000 for a police toy, an armored vehicle? You don't even open up warming centers for disabled people, and your cops and security guards are still harassing people nightly outside City Council. How many of you guys are going to be in the war crimes trial? Once the lights go out, it's going to be different. Literally, the blood is on your hands, and further militarization of the police is not doing anybody good, including your grandchildren or mine. Say no to this terrible idea. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Khalil Ferguson, then Keon Bliss.
Captain Noonan, City Council. My name is Khalil Ferguson. I'm an executive fellow for policy and research at the California Urban Partnership. I want to put this in the context for you all. On October 14th, 1982, President Ronald Reagan declared illicit drugs to be a threat to national security. Reagan's dogmatic zero-tolerance rhetoric not only bolstered police surveillance in black neighborhoods, but engendered the militarization of police departments. Amendments made to the Anti-Drug Abuse Act of 1986 further distorted the socioeconomic condition of black people. This is also the same year amendments were made to the Military Cooperation with Civilian Law Enforcement Agencies Act of 1981. In corroboration, these domestic policy decisions envisaged further marginalization of the black community by enacting stricter drug penalties with the militarization of the police to aid and abet in the pretentious war on drugs. The consortium between law enforcement and elected officials are incentivized by increased revenue generation to the city, and the black community is often the recipient of harassment based on the premise established by the social hierarchy stemming from colonial ideologies. Data aggregated by the California Sentencing Institute reveals that arrest rates in Sacramento County have dropped 33% from 2014. There's also a 4% reduction in the reported crime from 2014 to 2016 and a 24% decrease in county jail incarceration rates since 2014. At the same time, the county sheriff's report highlighted that between 2013 and 2017, the crime rate fell 24%. Property crimes fell 25%, and violent crimes fell 14%, while all others remain relatively unchanged. There's no need for this militarized vehicle to come into our communities, and especially not for taxpayers to pick up the bill for it. The document hyperlinked to the agenda states that the recommended purchase in the amount to not exceed $400,000 approximately will be made from the Department of Public Works fiscal year 1920 operating budget and charged to the Measure U fiscal year 2020 police budget. I do not believe the Measure U Committee even heard, let alone agreed, to the use of tax money in this manner, and I will not allow Measure U money to go towards completely derogatory purchases made on behalf of the Sacramento Police Department to militarily intimidate civilians. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Keon Bliss, then Daniel Mano.
Yeah, I don't like coming here either, because this is honestly one of the most undemocratic and non-deliberative bodies in the City Council and county, basically. So, you're talking in the middle of what is a housing crisis, a mental health crisis, and an environmental crisis, with the world literally burning down around us. Somehow, someway, you've managed to find $400,000 in taxpayer funds to buy what? A fucking tool for SACPD that is already over-militarized and completely abusive. So, Governor Newsom has made mental health treatment in combating homelessness a top priority, proposing a $1.4 billion budget for new services and housing. Why does the City of Sacramento insist on spending taxpayer dollars on unnecessary tank that goes against those priorities? The money to be spent on the tank would increase the city's spending on shelters, transitional housing for women and families with children by 40%, and would increase cities' funding for homeless mitigation activities by 29%. That's according to your city budget, 2019, 2020. According to the City Council report on new tiny home village project, $400,000 would pay for 32 tiny homes, more than doubling the number proposed in increasing the project's capacity from 48 to 112 people. That's page eight, top line. According to its current salary schedule, your current salary schedule, the cost of the tank the city could pay for the salaries for a year for six homeless service managers, seven adaptive recreation nurses, 25 youth aides. And the Sacramento City Unified School District is facing a huge budget deficit, a potential state takeover. Why does the city insist on spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on unnecessary military equipment? These are toys. You can see that they are already over-fucking armed. They are heavily militarized, and you have them here in City Council. It's obvious we can see it.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Thank you.
Get your fucking shit together.
Our next speaker is Daniel Mano.
Fuck you.
Daniel Mano is the final speaker on item 10 and the consent calendar.
Hi there. I came with less of a speech than anyone else, but this is a plea to say, please, listen to the feedback you're getting here. I know there's a lot of factors, a lot of things going on, but we have crises and homelessness and many other things, and COVID is one example, but we have places where we can put this money that would be much more useful to the people of Sacramento. I can't in good conscience support or vote for any council member who would approve of this, and I can't think of anyone I know who would either. So, it's one anecdotal piece of information, but this is all feedback that we really don't want more violence and more added, even though it's meant to be purportedly to protect people, clearly from people we've heard from today and from evidence investigations and other very serious reports, that this doesn't necessarily add to that prevention of violence. In fact, as someone said earlier, it adds to the view that we are more violent here in Sacramento. So, we know we don't want that, so please listen to the feedback here. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Chief Hahn, could I have you up to the podium, please? I'd like to ask a couple of questions, and then I'll turn it over to the council members. So, Chief, I think there may be some misconceptions about how we deploy a Bearcat or armored vehicle like the one in question. Certainly, when we had the incident in D2 and Tara Sullivan was shot and killed, other officers placed their lives at risk to retrieve her body would not have been able to without an armored vehicle, and there were some deficiencies there. Maybe you could just address that scenario, but, you know, I would question the people who spoke today about what they think a life is worth, because this particular armored vehicle can help save lives and has. Chief? Yeah, you're absolutely right, Councilmember Harris. First and foremost, one of my largest obligations as police chief is to keep people safe, all people, both officers and community. And I know I've heard this referred to as a tank. It is absolutely not a tank. It's not a military vehicle at all.
It is too.
It is too.
You shout out. If you shout out, we'll have you removed.
By the police, huh?
So, it really is literally a pickup truck that is bulletproof. It is an F-550, and it's bulletproof. And so, it's not even a weapon at all. It's a piece of equipment that keeps both officers and our community safe. You mentioned the incident where we lost Tara. What that man was firing at both Tara and all the officers, there's nothing in this police department other than this piece of equipment that can stop those rounds. So, the shields that our officers carry, the ballistic shields that are in the doors of the squad cars, those rifle rounds would go through that. So, the only way those officers can get to Tara was an armored vehicle like this. And so, we currently have already two armored vehicles. One, we received from the Department of Defense that is actually a military vehicle, and that one often doesn't start. We've had to have it towed, and it is actually not even certified to be ballistic in all parts, and so we are giving that back to the military. And so, we will continue to have two armored vehicles. We use this piece of equipment over 115 times in last year alone, and so it not only provides us ballistic protection to rescue, whether it be officers or citizens, but we also use it as a large piece of equipment that if somebody is shooting or potentially shooting, to block downrange so anybody, residents, officers, do not get shot. And it is literally the only piece of equipment that stops many of these rifle rounds. And so, it is not a weapon at all. There's no guns attached to it. There's no weapons attached to it. It is literally a ballistic truck that keeps bullets from hitting both our officers and our community. And I think, as police chief, I would be extremely remiss that we would put our officers in harm's way and our community in harm's way when we have the ability and the equipment to be able to stop that. And right now, that's what this is for, and we used it in Tara. We would have not been able to get to Tara without this piece of equipment in a safe manner. So, I thank you for that. Before I turn it over to my colleagues, I'd like to say that I went to North Command, and I looked at that vehicle after the incident, and of course, the assailant was using AR-15 with heavy rounds. There was very substantial damage to that vehicle, even though it's armored, and in fact, it shattered bulletproof glass. He shot it multiple times, yes. There were officers inside that vehicle. Yes. Desiring to get to Officer O'Sullivan and were successful in the end at retrieving her body, but there were some issues with that, too, a lack of a body armor or an armor plate on the underside of the vehicle. Is that correct? Yes, it got disabled in that backyard because the debris in the backyard pierced the oil pan of the vehicle, and so it wouldn't run anymore. So, this new one has protection against that, but we will still have the old one, too. Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues. Councilmember Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Chief, I wanted to ask a couple of questions as well. One is, this vehicle could be used in the event of officers taking fire to go in, retrieve officers, but what about hostages, for instance, if the police are forced to go in with SWAT or through one or the other department, and there are hostages being taken? This vehicle, the same vehicle, could be used to go in to help retrieve our constituents here in Sacramento from hostile fire?
Yeah, not only could it, it has been used for that, and it's also been used if we're evacuating a neighborhood where somebody is shooting or potentially shooting, especially with high-powered rifles. We use that to block the downfield path of those rounds, so we park it between the suspect's house or location, wherever he is, and those houses we're evacuating, because bullets can't go through it. And so, it is used absolutely for evacuating, for rescuing, both citizens and officers.
Okay. Then, secondly, the funding for this, and maybe this is directed to either you or the city manager, the funding for this vehicle is coming from where?
That I would have to turn over to Don. Go ahead. We'll have the city manager reply.
So, our finance director will come up in a second, but it's general fund money that was approved during the mid-year process, and this is the contract that executes the purchase of the vehicle.
Okay, all right. And then, my last question is relative to the... This vehicle differs from the one that we got from the Department of Justice. Did I hear you say that correctly?
It differs from that and our current similar vehicle in a couple ways. The one from Department of Justice is not actually ideal for what we do. It's hard to get in and out of. It differs from our current Bearcat in terms of our current one has two doors. This one will have four doors, which allows us to do the rescues much easier, so the people we're rescuing or evacuating can go in the back door. Right now, it only has two front doors, the current one we have.
And then, when the vehicle that you have, that we got from the feds, when that goes back, this one is intended to be known to improve and replace it, but what happens when that other vehicle goes back?
It goes back to the Department of Defense, and they do whatever they do with it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, council member. Next is Councilmember Ashby.
Yeah, thanks for staying up here, Chief. Just a quick question. Didn't... We already approved this purchase, didn't we, city manager?
The Council approved the funding during the mid-year process. This is...
Okay, so this is just the contract now?
Correct.
All right, okay. So, we approved it as a larger package when we were adopting many other things, right? Some of the things that we were moving forward with the shelters and the housing strategy and all that, did it at the same time?
That's correct.
Okay, so it seems a little bit in isolation now, but it's really not, because this is just the contract coming back.
Which is why it's on consent.
Okay, got it. And then, I remember in the days after the Tara shooting that some officers, particularly the officer who drove the Bearcat to the scene, mentioned to me that they had to go a great distance, and I think this was because the federal unit that you have doesn't run, so they couldn't use that, and they had to go get this one. So, is having one... I know the other one's old and probably won't last much longer, but I know that part of the strategy here was to have something closer in the north area and one in the south area so that you could handle hostage situations faster. Is that right or accurate, or how did that work out?
Somewhat. We typically use both at the same time to provide the most protection, and so what we changed is that patrol officers are trained to drive them now, and so a patrol officer would go retrieve it, so SWAT doesn't have to respond to the station to pick it up and then the scene, so SWAT officers can respond directly to the scene. So, in that sense, it does speed up response time of the specially-trained officers that often use it.
And then, I too have... I'm sure some of my colleagues have gotten messages, and I heard a couple of people today mention like a tank, but can you just talk a little bit about the difference? Because I know it's not a tank, and it's considered more of like a defense. If it takes fire, right, not... So, can you explain that difference?
Yeah, I'm not a military guy, and I've never actually been inside of a tank, but every tank I've ever seen has weapons on it.
Right.
Has a large gun or multiple guns. There is no weapons on this vehicle.
Okay.
And I would liken it to if it's like the bulletproof vest that an officer wears or the ballistic shields we put in the squad car. That's all it does. It stops bullets. That's all it does.
All right. And so, you see this piece of equipment as necessary for the officers to be able to help in a hostage situation, to be able to intervene on the scene where there's gunfire, right? Are those the best uses, or what would the other uses be?
I consider this piece of equipment essential to keeping our officers alive and our community members alive.
Okay. All right. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. I'll be supporting the item tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Next speaker is Councilmember Guerra.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Mayor. I want to... Thank you, Chief, for being here. One, I think a lot of the questions have been asked about the time of use, when it's being used, how many times we've used it in the past. Appreciate you clarifying that, because I did have a number of constituents who reached out to me on this. I just wanted to clarify one more issue here, and that's we already have two of these vehicles, one which is almost 30 years old. Is that correct?
Well, we have one similar to this, and the other one's the Department of Defense vehicle that we're giving back, so they're not really similar. They look completely different.
They're not similar, but one of them is reaching the end of its usefulness. Is that...
Yeah, the military one pretty much is useless right now. It doesn't start half the time, and it's been towed.
But this isn't an expansion of our current fleet at all. It's basically just meeting the status quo.
Correct. For a while now, we've had two armored vehicles. They're very different, but they were used similarly, that they stop rounds, and we will continue to have only two.
Okay. Well, thank you. I appreciate that clarification of the safety vehicles that you've identified here and the purpose of them. So, thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Mayor Steinberg.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. So, I came in a little bit late, but for me, I want to kind of get back to the essence of that terrible night in June of 2019, where Tara Sullivan lost her life. But...
That's enough, please. No outbursts from the audience.
You let us bleed out.
Mayor?
But for... But for the officers responding to the scene attempting to help Tara Sullivan and stabilize the situation, being in that kind of vehicle, that Bearcat, would they likely have been shot, seriously injured, and potentially killed if we did not... if they did not use that vehicle?
I would put it like this, Mayor. That suspect shot at our officers for hours with very high-powered rifle. The Bearcat got shot numerous times, at times inches from the head. The Bearcat shot, got shot numerous times, at times inches from the heads of officers that were inside of it. There's no doubt in my mind, without the actions of those officers and the well-thought-out actions and the things that the officers did themselves and this ballistic piece of equipment, there's absolutely no doubt in my mind we would have had multiple funerals after that call.
That's the answer to my question. Thank you.
And lastly, chief, before you get away, I think there's a misconception that this vehicle would be used for patrol, and it's my understanding that that is not at all the use that it's intended.
Not only would we not use it for patrol, we never have used it for patrol.
All right, thank you very much, chief. I appreciate your comments. Oh, Larry Carr is punched up. Larry?
Chief?
Yes?
How long was it before we could get to Tara O'Sullivan's body?
It was about 40 minutes.
Thank you.
We have a motion by Protem Ashby, second from councilmember Guerra. All those in favor of consent?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Consent carries, we'll turn it back over to Mayor Steinberg.
War criminals!
We are not a military state.
Congratulations to all y'all for on seeing...
War criminals! War criminals! War criminals! You're committing genocide on the streets of Sacramento and you know it!
Jeff, Jeff, I need you to do it.
We turn to the discussion calendar. Item number 27 is the City Auditor's Citywide Innovation and Efficiency Assessment and Potential Strategies.
And we have our city auditor, Jose O'Segarra, to give us a presentation.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor and members of the City Council. Jorge O'Segarra, your Sacramento City Auditor. Today, the council will hear a report on the citywide innovation and efficiencies opportunities and also a presentation on the fiscal model and fiscal forecast that was created by our consultants, Management Partners. I would like to thank Management Partners, the City Manager's Office, and the mayor and city council for their help and feedback in completing this report. We anticipate 20 to 30 minutes to present this report and presentation. We ask that you hold your questions until the presentation is complete. With that said, I would like to turn it over to the gentleman from Management Partners to conduct the presentation.
Thank you, Jorge. You're Mayor Protem, members of the council. I'm Andy Belknap with Management Partners. I'm here with my colleagues Jay Trevino and Bob Leland, and we're going to present first the fiscal model that we constructed that is useful because it sort of defines the most likely scenarios of the city's fiscal condition over the next several years. And then we're going to talk about the budget strategies that we have suggested. The, let me start this by saying, we were asked to do these two things, develop a fiscal model, which is a best practice. The city wanted an independent third-party review because the city does fiscal modeling, has done it for years. And the city wanted the ability to easily create alternative scenarios. We were also engaged to develop 10 to 20 strategies which would promote fiscal sustainability. We were asked to do this in the context of looking at both efficiency, efficiencies and cost savings as well as revenue generation opportunities. And we were asked to do this in a way which could be implemented without displacing existing city employees. We worked with management to examine pretty much everything the city does, every revenue generation approach that we could think of, every expense reduction approach that might be viable here. But nothing we are suggesting hasn't been implemented in a California local government setting. I don't mean by that last comment to suggest that any of this will be easy. These will all be hard. All of the easy solutions have been taken, been implemented. We're left with fairly difficult strategies. And I would mention before, I turn this over to Bob Leland to run you through the fiscal model quickly, that you'll see that Sacramento, like a lot of local governments, is bumping into the reality that it will probably never be able to rebuild or position itself to employ the same number of employees as you had prior to the Great Recession. And that is the biggest challenge that is impacting most local governments in California. And many of our strategies discuss some alternative ways of delivering services. So what I'd like to do now is invite Bob Leland to come up and present the fiscal model, which sort of sets the stage for the solution strategies.
Thank you, Andy. I'm Bob Leland, Senior Advisor to Management Partners. So what we're going to do is take just a quick look at the forecast. You have a very detailed write-up in the report that you received last week. So we're going to start out with the assumptions. The assumptions are the key. You know, the rest of it's just arithmetic. So once you agree on the assumptions, that gives context for where the city's going financially and it provides a context in which to consider our recommendations for cost-cutting and revenue increases. So what you see here on the left is the types of things that you can control, at least to a large degree, spending. On the right are the things you can't control, which is the economy. So in terms of spending, in addition to the current MOUs that have been adopted, we're assuming ongoing 2% COLAs a year. Basically, that's just, that's basic inflation. It just reflects that there are wage pressures that are going to have to be addressed over time and that with the rest of the items in the model inflated, you need to inflate labor costs as well. We have a modest amount of growth per year, and we're going to talk about that a little more in a moment, about 13 FTE per year. That's a lot less than what you have been adding per year over the last seven years. Vacancy rate, long-term, we're assuming it comes down to 3% under the assumption that if positions are important enough to add, they're important enough to fill. Ultimately, they will be filled except for the normal background noise of vacancies throughout the course of the year, just because you can't keep all positions fully filled. O&amp;M growth, non-personnel costs, 2% growth. We're assuming capital is equal to 100% of your current CIP, the burden on the general fund. The multi-year operating programs, we assume that that stays 100% of the current fiscal year '20 level. And in terms of Measure U, we're assuming that approximately $25 million a year is used for new investments, whether it's affordable housing or other community investments above and beyond your current baseline program of services. And again, these are budgeting decisions, so you have a large degree of discretion in how these are carried out from year to year. On the right-hand side, with the economic issues, we assume a recession in fiscal year '22 and every seven years thereafter, with a moderate level of revenue loss over an 18-month period. That's pretty much an average between the early '80s recession and the dot-com bust.
Bob, can I interrupt for just a second? Councilmember Shear has a question.
Hi, Bob.
Hi.
Real quick, on the Measure U piece, I know that when we were looking at some of the projections that we had done in-house, they counted for the first year of repayments on bonds. Does this, if we wanted to sell bonds, does this include any of that or this 25 million?
We're assuming that whether you pay as you go or sell bonds, that $25 million, roughly a quarter of the revenue from Measure U, would be dedicated for that purpose. The other three quarters would be available to backstop general fund services and support those over time.
So the $7 million that it would take or the $14 million if we sold 250 million would come out of this 25?
Right. It would. And what I'm hearing is that you're planning to phase in, whereas, but again, we've earmarked within the forecast 25 million. Whether you use it all for bonds or not in the beginning would be a budget decision for you.
Great, thank you.
Sure. So on the new construction, we have a fairly robust assumption of 1,500 units per year and $400 million of non-residential value. Now, that's consistent with what's happened over the long term, 30 years. It's obviously ebbed and flowed during that time based on economic cycles. And the city has committed itself to some aggressive efforts in the area of affordable housing. And so we're assuming that a major effort will be made to make those units happen. But the first units that get built are not a windfall. The forecast already has this built in, so you've got to do better than this in order to come up with an outcome that's better than our forecast. In terms of sales tax growth rate, it's roughly equal to what your sales tax consultant is recommending in their near-term forecast. It's about 3.6% average pre-recession. Economic cycles get overlaid on that. Change in ownership value, we assume that 3% of the parcels are going to increase an average of 35% from changes in ownership. The other 97% of existing parcels go up by the 2% inflator. And then there's CALPERS. We have an assumption that the pension discount rate will drop from the current 7% to 6% over 20 years, starting in fiscal '23. Now, again, CALPERS hasn't yet moved to make that reduction, but over the last 30 years, the discount rate has declined from 8.75% to the current 7%. Given the things that they want to accomplish in terms of higher funding level for the program and given the recommendation of their investment advisors that they're looking at below 7% investment returns, we think there'll be a continuing pressure for that kind of decline. So again, those issues, except to what you can accomplish locally regarding new construction, those are largely beyond your ability to control. Now, just speaking to the staffing, this chart shows where you were in 1997, 2,900 positions. That grew steadily to the 3,954 that was the peak before the Great Recession. Then it plummeted 30%, significant decline in the wake of the Great Recession. It has steadily clawed back in part because of the original Measure U's half-cent sales tax that allowed over 400 positions to be added back. And so that helped restore staffing. The average growth has been 121 positions a year over the last seven years. The green line is the extension of that trend. There is no way that you'll be able to sustain that kind of growth over time. We have a more limited growth in the model, 13 positions a year, under the assumption that major inroads have been made on restoring services and that is going to only address the highest priority of city needs over that time. But it's not 0% staffing growth. So we have some allowance for that, but as you can see, it's well less than the recent trend on the green line. And even in 20 years, it's still below the pre-recession peak. So where does that leave us? We're showing a shortfall of $13 million average from fiscal '20 through fiscal '28. It's exacerbated around fiscal year '23 by the cumulative effects of the inflation, I mean, the recession, and then also the increase in pension costs. The actual available balance, and as we're defining that, it's unassigned balance, it's your economic uncertainty reserve, it's the amounts that you've set aside for pension reserve and OPEB. That balance would steadily decline, pretty much hit zero in fiscal year '25, go a little negative. And then by the time the next recession would occur, around '28, '29, it would begin to dip again. So the thing I want to stress is that this does not include the portion of your fund balance that is dedicated to capital projects or has been set aside for programs, FIRE and others, in the past several years where money's been appropriated but not spent. So it's still held in fund balance. Now, there's different ways to look at this. Things could get worse, obviously, if FTE growth is more than 13 a year. And again, that's a budget decision of yours, but if you increase it and, let's say, COLAs go up only from 2% to 2.5%, that would be a steady, ongoing shortfall and the fund balance deficit would continue to grow. On the other hand, if vacancy rate stays high, 7% ongoing, then you don't really have a problem. But there, again, you have a certain advertised level of service that's envisioned by the positions that you've authorized. And if you kept a 7% vacancy rate ongoing, many of those positions would not be filled, would be unable to perform those services. Now, another way to look at it is to say, well, what if we just grow a whole lot more? What if the growth rate is double what you've got in the forecast? So we're now looking at 3,000 units a year and $800 million in non-residential growth. Well, obviously, that would produce better revenues, and that's the chart on the left. Looking at that alone, you'd say, well, that's good, we'll grow our way out of it. But the reality is, if you grow at that rate, you are going to have higher expenses to serve that growth. And after factoring in a higher growth rate to respond to that, the chart on the right shows you basically back down toward a very minimal fund balance again. So we feel it's difficult to just grow your way out, and it's not really reasonable to assume that level of new housing units and non-residential growth in a year. In addition, there are other unknowns. And the three that we have here are deferred maintenance, the future of the enterprise tax, and youth services. Now, in terms of deferred maintenance, that's always seems the first thing to go in budgetary cutbacks. First cut, last to be restored. That is a choice of the council, however. This isn't like an economic variable. This is a budgetary decision you could make. These costs are only getting higher, so it's really a question of pay it now or pay more later. Based on the information we got from staff, we feel that there's a minimum of $30 million a year you should be spending that you're not on streets, facilities, parks, and swimming pools. City staff is working on refined estimates and they will definitely be higher than $30 million a year. So at a bare minimum, you should find the resources to pay that $30 million a year. In terms of the enterprise tax...
Bob, could I interrupt you just briefly?
Yes.
I believe I read in the report that the total deferred maintenance at this point was $1,400,000?
The...
The aggregate deferred maintenance across all departments?
The, we had an estimate in here, if I can find it. The...
It's on page 50.
Yeah. The, we did a look at, based on the city of San Jose, that was imputing that the impact might be $750,000, I mean, $715 million. And that is the assumption that we're, the million and a, the billion and a half, it comes from the city of San Jose. And then by applying Sacramento population to that, we come up with $715 million.
Thank you for clarifying.
That is just a gross assumption and can be fleshed out by your public works people. So in terms of the enterprise tax, you were challenged on that, lost in Superior Court, it's currently on appeal. There is $31 million a year at risk there. If you lose on appeal, it would take a 2/3 vote of the voters to reinstate the tax. That's by no means an assured situation. So that this, that risk is something that you have to consider for the future. On the youth services, well, we just had the election, Measure G lost. That would have diverted 2.5% of unrestricted, unrestricted city revenues for youth services. And depending on how that was defined, that would be between 12 and $16 million. So that loss... So, that lost, however, on the fall ballot, we should have a measure that will allocate a portion of revenue growth, which is more like $3 million a year. And so, we've built the $3 million figure into our numbers. The chart that you see here shows just how much the range can be in terms of the shortfalls you may face. I mean, literally, it ranges from no shortfall at all on the low end to where the average annual base shortfall would actually be a small positive of $1 million a year, to the middle estimate, which is the $13 million a year base shortfall, to a more pessimistic $31 million base shortfall. And then, the orange area below it is the potential added shortfall, depending on the combination of deferred maintenance funding, loss of enterprise tax, and spending on youth services. And so, that ranges from zero up to $64 million. Now, the deferred maintenance part of that is up to you in any given year. The youth services, if that's approved, and the loss of the enterprise tax would be really sort of beyond your control. So, what we're trying to do here is provide a fiscal context in which to consider the recommendations that we came up with. And it would appear that you should be prepared over time for anything from a zero shortfall up to over $60 million, at the worst, getting close to $95 to $100 million. And so, that is a quick run-through in terms of the forecast. What we want to do at this point is come up and walk you through the different groupings of recommendations, and you can see what type of return might be realized from acting on those items.
Thank you, Bob. Our takeaway from that fiscal model and that fiscal analysis is that the status quo is not sustainable. You are not in a position to continue adding hundreds of new positions per year. The city is not going to be able, for the foreseeable future, to get back to the roughly 4,000 positions that it had prior to the Great Recession. Yet, population is going to continue to grow, and service demand is going to continue to grow. This means you have to look at different ways of doing things and think about the strategies that we're going to present, which include both revenue increases and service delivery changes. We actually identified 26 different strategies to improve budget sustainability. They have one-time impacts and ongoing impacts. In terms of ongoing, we think they're around $70 million, 70, 80 million in opportunities. And there's one-time monies of, say, $20 million. We're going to present 12 key strategies. Seven are going to be cost control strategies, and five are going to be revenue enhancement strategies. And the city of Sacramento has done a good job with this sort of thing going back more than 10 years now. Because coming out of the Great Recession, you pulled together and got Measure U passed and just reauthorized and made permanent and increased. And we're proposing some additional strategies along the revenue line, as well as some cost containment strategies. Jay Trevino is going to run through those strategies at a high level now.
Thank you, Andy. Jay Trevino with Management Partners. We've grouped the 26 strategies. Again, as Andy said, we're going to highlight about half of them, 12. And we've grouped them in terms of cost control and then also revenue enhancement. The first group of strategies I want to talk about, include or start with overtime. There is an opportunity for the city to make efforts to reduce overtime. About 92% of Sacramento's overtime is expended in the police and fire departments. There are other departments that also expend significant amounts of overtime. But again, if you're looking at where the most significant savings might occur, it is in public safety. Now, overtime is an area where it's not realistic to think that you're going to eliminate all the overtime. In fact, overtime in public safety is a necessary component of the way the departments operate. But there is an opportunity, we believe, to curtail some of those expenditures. They've been growing pretty much unchecked for a number of years, and as we cite here, 264% growth between 2012 and 2018, or about 38% a year. We also recommend, and so, we think that that has the potential, just by sort of establishing goals for overtime expenditure reduction, to save the city about $3.1 to $3.3 million each year. And that still leaves sizable amounts of overtime available to the departments. Energy costs is another area where Sacramento and other cities have made significant inroads, and specifically through implementing a partnership with a energy service company to reduce the city's overall energy costs. So, this is about energy efficiency, installing new fixtures, new types of lighting, or other energy-saving equipment. And our estimates are that this could save the city about $1,008,000 per year. Again, these are tried and true strategies that not just government agencies have pursued, but private industry as well. Our report talks about different ways of doing business, as Andy alluded. One of those is through managed competition, which is really just a strategy to try to make sure that the costs of providing services in different program areas is commensurate with the cost that you might find from the private sector. And this could be effective in a variety of service areas. In our report, we identify some of the potential service areas that the council could consider. Our estimates are that this could save the city. It's quite a wide range, again, depending on which program areas you were to undertake. But the savings could range between $3 and a little over $8 million each year. Design build is a strategy that focuses on your capital improvement projects. And so, while this really is affecting a different pool of funds, not the funds that, not the general funds that you use to pay salaries, it's nevertheless an important area where, through a different approach to hiring and letting projects, capital improvement projects, you could save what we estimate to be close to $7 million a year, just through a different procurement process and pursuing projects in a different contractual way. So, effectively, what this would allow you to do is to stretch your capital improvement dollars, so spread them, to do more capital improvement projects than you otherwise would be able to afford. Gain sharing is another concept that our report discusses, and it is a concept that looks to build partnerships with public labor groups as a way to identify areas where city services could be provided at a lower cost, through efficiencies, through changes in the way the programs are operated. And it's called gain sharing because the idea is that through this partnership with public employees, the savings from the potential innovations and efficiencies would be shared between the city and the public employees. In other words, there would be an incentive for the public employees to participate. They could stand to gain some sort of financial benefit from that. And of course, the city could save money. We estimate, based on benchmarks from other agencies that have pursued gain sharing, that this could save the city in the range of about $5 million a year. The city, like most cities, maintains a certain number of vacancies each year, if only because people retire, positions go vacant, and there's a time, a lag time, for those positions to be replaced. And however, the number of vacant positions in Sacramento is sizable, and we believe that eliminating just 50% of the vacant full-time positions could save the city approximately $20 million a year. There is some discussion that your finance and HR departments have had about this, that maybe not all the vacant positions are truly vacant in this context. But this is what the data show. We got these data from the departments, and the departments show, again, sizable numbers of vacancies. Subsidies is an area of cost control that we think also ought to be considered. So, these are areas that of enrichment of community services in Sacramento, like the galleries and zoos and other enrichment programs that are really large contributors to the quality of life in Sacramento, but that they're not essential. And our discussion in the report is that they could be more largely self-supporting. And assuming that, we think this is an area where about $2, $2.5 million, $2.6 million a year could be saved. I want to switch real quick to the revenue enhancement strategies. We grouped these into these two different categories to try to highlight different approaches to achieving a greater level of financial sustainability. The first of the revenue enhancement strategies is a business operations tax. This is a significant recommendation we've made in our report. We go into a lot of discussion here and provide a lot of comparison. But in essence, this business operations tax has remained at the same rate for 30 years, nearly 30 years in Sacramento. It is not on par when you look at how Sacramento compares with other agencies, large and small. So, even the smaller cities that surround you, or the larger cities that would be more like a peer, a true peer of Sacramento, Sacramento is sort of an outlier. Your business operations tax is substantially lower. This has the potential of generating, our estimates suggest, about $9.3 million a year. And so, we've made a recommendation that the council consider.
Would require a vote of the people?
Yes, sir.
But we could put it on the ballot?
Yes. A utility audit is another area, again, a tried and true approach of utility departments in government agencies, pretty much everywhere. This is basically the idea that you bring in an audit consultant that would work with your staff to identify potential errors in your utility billing and to maximize accurate collection. The best practices suggest that industry-wide, that 17% of utility bills contain errors. And so, effectively, what happens is that when you're not recapturing those costs from those utility bill customers, the forgone revenues are, somebody else is paying for that, basically. You're subsidizing other customers. You're foregoing a revenue that really you are due to receive. And so, we think that is a good approach, and again, would potentially save a little over $2 million a year. Pavement cut fees is an area for the last, really, couple of decades, if not longer, cities have really explored deeply, because the streets are significant cost area of infrastructure for local government. And specifically, when private companies, whether they're utility companies like the gas company, or the electric utility, or cable TV companies, or other private utilities, come in and they cut your public streets, they trench to lay new cable or do things like that, they damage your street. And that street is a really expensive investment that the city has made, the taxpayers have made in Sacramento, and it lessens the lifespan of those streets. And so, establishing a pavement cut fee, so that when those private companies come in and do some damage to your public streets, that the city's being reimbursed for that is a strategy that many cities have used. If you look at the strategy in our report, we cite evidence from the city of Los Angeles, which has done some really impressive work in the area of pavement cut fees. There are many, many cities that have also used this strategy. We have the, our estimates are that this could save about $1,007,000 to $2,004,000 each The strategy dealing with the paramedic and ambulance subscription program, this is a program that you find more commonly in Southern California, fire departments than in Northern California. But nevertheless, it's a longstanding program that's been highly successful in generating revenues for cities, and specifically the fire departments. In essence, this is a way of providing your constituents, your residents, an opportunity to buy a subscription for emergency services, so that if they come, you know, they happen to need ambulance services, et cetera, they don't end up, after they get the ambulance services, with that really huge bill, right? So, this allows them, basically, a subscription that would cover those, that ambulance transport or the paramedic services in lieu of getting a large bill after the services are provided. Based on the revenue estimates that we have seen in other cities, we've estimated this could generate $1 million to $1,500,000 each year. Franchise fees is another area that the report discusses. Sacramento does not collect franchise fees from the Sacramento Municipal Utility District. You do collect those same sorts of franchise fees, however, from other utilities. And so, it seemed that there really wasn't a level playing field, so to speak, between that utility and other utilities. And this strategy really just recognizes that, and it identifies the potential to raise between $5 and $7 million a year through establishing that. Now, that, back to the mayor's earlier question, this would also require legislation, in this case, legislation by the state to achieve. So, in a nutshell, those are the 12 strategies we wanted to highlight, and I'll turn it back over to Andy.
Thanks, Jay. I'm just going to make some concluding comments, and then our team is here to answer any questions that you might have to the best of our ability. I'm certain that there will be objections to every single recommendation in this report. That's the nature of change, and change is hard. And as I mentioned at the beginning, the easy things have been done. But I would note that the suggestions that we put forward are in operation in other local governments in California. But nevertheless, that doesn't change things. There will be objections to everything. But the city doesn't have a whole lot of choices but to look at, look at some of these, some package of these strategies, because as we show in the fiscal model, the status quo is not sustainable. And I'll close just with this, I always think about this in thinking about innovations and change, is a quote from Samuel Johnson, that "Nothing will ever be attempted if all possible objections must first be overcome."
Thank you. Appreciate the months of work on the report, and Mr. Rosquera, you and your team, thank you for...
I'm punched up. I can't punch out.
For running point on this for the city, along with the city manager, Howard Chen. I know we've spent a lot of, and your budget team, of course, the fiscal team. I know we have spent a lot of time in preliminary discussions anticipating these very important recommendations. And I want to hone in, and I know Councilman Shneur May as well, on the issue of vacant positions. But I want to tell you why this whole exercise is so important. Two reasons, one that is obvious and the other which might be a little less obvious. The obvious is that we have an ambitious agenda here in the city of Sacramento. We have an ambitious agenda. We have an obligation to the voters to follow through on our promises with Measure U. We have placed on the November 2020 ballot an amended, but still important, children's funding initiative. We have our responsibilities to all of our public employees, to... We have our responsibilities to all of our public employees to follow through on our important commitments that we have made to them, and we have to run a city. And so we have all of this, and even with the new Measure U money, we see, beginning next year, and as your report points out, maybe a little differently in terms of scope or magnitude than the city's fiscal analysis, but we run deficits. So how do we do it all? There's another issue which I think gets overlooked here in terms of the philosophical debate that we often have here at City Hall, and this is much to our city employees as it is to the members of the public and my colleagues. What is the city's primary role and function? I know that's an esoteric question in a way, and certainly I would argue providing public safety is first, and providing basic city services is first. But is our only role, or our primary role, to take the taxpayers' money and run the city? Or is it, in fact, to have an investment strategy for our community and our neighborhoods? Because that's what all of these debates that we had in 2018, 19, and will continue to have in '20 are all about. And so to the degree that we can find $30 million a year worth of efficiencies, which I read this report, I don't think is unreasonable, we can answer those questions and balance in a way that maybe doesn't allow us to have it all, but allows us to come a lot closer. And that's where you get to this question of vacant positions. And this is a conundrum, because there is a stark difference in disagreement, I'm sure it's a respectful disagreement, between what you have found and recommended and what our staff responded. You say hundreds of vacant positions, and eliminating just 50% of the vacant full-time positions could save $20 million a year. Boom, 2/3, 2/3 of the way there from my $30 million bogey. The finance staff writes back and says, oh, wait a minute, you parse all this out, and by the way, I understood your recommendation to say non-public, you cut half the vacant non-public safety positions. You save $20 million a year. And then they come back and say, well, wait a minute, when you parse it all out, there's only 2 and 1/2 vacancies. Oh, my. This is really an important subject. So how do you want to have this? Jay, do you want to take this?
Can I make a quick comment, Mr. Mayor? So I think when we talk about the vacancies in the report and what the finance staff has pulled together, it's important to note that what's in the report is a point in time. We've run a similar point in time count in terms of the vacancies. I don't think we're disputing the number of vacancies necessarily, because we're at around 448 versus the 521. It's the composition of those vacancies that's important, and our finance director is ready to come up and kind of walk through that, because when you look at the net numbers, you'll have her walk through that.
I appreciate it, and I think that's appropriate, but I think it needs to be side-by-side with management partners and our auditor, because you have, together, essentially have come to a different conclusion. And reconciling this is really important, because we need $10 to $20 million here. So, how's that? Jay, I'm going to turn it over to Jay on this, because I know this was something that he wanted to talk about.
Yeah, so I think, I'm going to have some recommendations about how to proceed overall. Couple of things on this one, and I've heard it both ways, so I just want us to be clear on whether this includes public safety or not. And public safety, there's lots of ways to get to public safety, but let's include fire and police as public safety at this point. So does the number, whether it's 520 or 440, include public safety? I think that's the first big question.
Yeah.
It does.
Right. Adam Clark, can we go ahead and get the overhead, please?
But did they say it does? I want Jorge and the management partners up at the same time, so that we can go.
He's asking the person who wrote that.
Okay.
Okay. So I think this is part of how we need to proceed later on. And I think a lot of this work is going to fall to the city manager with auditor support on it, because there's a lot of analysis that they've done, they've done a great job pointing a lot of these things out, and a good job on the analysis. But the actual impacts of this, I think, are really important for us to see. So if we're talking about the positions, for example, you know, what in here is reimbursed to the general fund? So if we lost them, it wouldn't make a difference on our overall bottom line. And what would be the impact by type of position? And what happens if we lose them? So I think we have, on all of these things, there are two or three next steps that we can take, that I hope the council can identify this afternoon to come back to.
That's fine.
I don't want to spend a lot of time at this point, but I think, Mr. Mayor, whether you, that it comes back to the council, whether you do some kind of ad hoc, or just bring it back to the Budget Committee, once we get a next step with the city manager on all these, and I'll lay out how I'm thinking about it. I would say that there are a couple of other ways that we should be cutting this, or slicing the information that we have. One is by how it can get done. So there's a feasibility analysis we need to think about, whether it's something the city manager could do, whether it's something the council has to do, whether it's something we have to go out to a vote of the public, or, where's my fourth? This is my oops moment, yeah. Whether we need, no, it's, oh, yeah, whether we need state legislation on how to do this. So there's ways to do it, and there's also a short, medium, and long-term cut that we can do as well. So those are things, but I'll come back.
So what you're saying is, today, you'd rather not go through the detail of the vacancy back and forth?
No, because I think we need to sit down, walk through the vacancies by type of position, by department, and see really where we are.
Okay, maybe then, maybe a compromise here without going into a lot of detail, but what is the basis of the discrepancy here in general, so that we can then have it come back and?
Well, just so before Don starts, I want to say that the 521, that discrepancy you're talking about, it's almost apples and oranges. The vacant positions in the point in time of 10/22/19, the management partners used was 521. The number we're looking at as of February 20, 2020, is 448. So it's the composition of those vacancies, those that are offset by revenues that come in through various departments, some that are seasonal, that we chatted a little bit about, and then those are public safety ones that are in fact vacancies, but there is a level of service that we have to have a discussion about. And that's, I think, what Councilman Shneur is talking about.
Okay, that's fine, then. Let's not, he just explained it.
Right, and there's also a balancing act that we have to do, particularly in fire and police, over the overtime issues. So if we have vacancies and we're using it for overtime, what's the best way to get after that as well? So I think there are a lot of questions. I have a lot of questions on this. I don't want to go through them all now, but we definitely will talk about it.
Okay, then that's, I think we're fine. Mr. Chen, the city manager sort of outlined, outlined it. Thank you, Ms. Holm. But I do want, I'm going to get management partners up here. That's what I want, please. Mr. Belknap? Have you sat down and talked with the Department of Finance about why they come to the conclusion they came to, and you came to some conclusion that says we can save $20 million bucks a year?
Not about these numbers that have just been shown. We haven't had a conversation about those numbers.
Okay, I would ask you then
They're dated 2/20.
I would ask you then, as part of the process here, to continue to help us to actually do that, because we don't want to get excited, if you will, about some savings possibilities, if they're really not there. But it seems to me that that piece of it is the next necessary step, so that when you do talk to Councilmember Shneur and the council, in whatever forum we talk about, that we're talking apples to apples here.
Sure, and we would be happy to do that. The only thing I would point out is, these are two different point-in-time analyses, and things have changed since we did our analysis to today.
Fair enough.
I think it's true, though, that you have been ending the fiscal year typically with unspent funds, because you do carry vacancies. So there is, there is, there is an issue to talk about there.
And I just want to say, I don't think, I don't have any problem with 520 versus 440. I get, those are point-in-time counts, and it's going to change as we hire and go through, particularly around the seasonal stuff that we do. I think the question is, you know, as we go down, what are the impacts if we eliminate positions? And for some of them, if it's reimbursed money at this point, there's no point, it's not going to help our bottom line, but I think we have a lot of questions about that.
Right, and the other thing is, as I think we agree on this, the economy, the economy may be changing as we speak, but the economy has been
It's a good day.
Hot, and the city hasn't been able to fill all of its vacancies because of the competitive job market. In fact, 70 of the positions in the list are currently under recruitment. You may or may not be able to fill those. So I think that's worth noting, too.
Good, thank you. Let's go. Vice Mayor Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to thank Andy Bob and Jay from Management Partners. It was actually myself and Councilmember Shneur who were on the committee to select you for this work, and I'd like to thank the city auditor as well, Farishtan, and Jorge for their work on this. It's a very informative report, and yes, we can dissect and analyze, and that's actually what we need to do, and figure out where our reality lies and balance, you know, our liabilities against our possible savings. You know, it really brings to mind that we do have financial jeopardy moving forward between the utility tax deferred maintenance and lowered CalPERS discount rate. Those are very significant numbers that we have to pay attention to. And it is true that our deferred maintenance list climbs every year, and that's of great concern to me. Yes, we can look at staff vacancies. I would like to look at the BOT revamping and maybe go to the ballot with that, because there are potential savings there. There are a couple of other things, though, that are alluded to in the report. Managed competition is something that I've thought about for a long time, and I think that there are tremendous savings to do there, but politically, it's a difficult lift. There's no doubt about it, because it affects our unions, and we have to be realistic about that. But we also have to be realistic about where we're headed financially, and I think that you have given us a little extra to our modeling tool, so that we can prognosticate a little more accurately where we're headed. You know, our economy countrywide is a little fragile at the moment, and certainly the coronavirus puts us, I think, at real risk. Obviously, when the market tumbles 2,000 points in a day, there's something going on here. And we've known that the growth in our marketplace over the last 10 years has been extreme. You know, we haven't had a period of expansion like this in U.S. history, and it can't last forever. So we have to be mindful of all these market forces and pressures. So this item is about direction to the city manager, and I'm assuming that what we're going to do is give you direction, so that you can analyze and come back with some suggestions about how we move forward. The mayor talks about trying to garner $30 million in savings. I think that's a great goal. I'd like to take it a little further, because the utility tax is a very serious jeopardy here. You know, we're not in great shape about that, and we may have to face that reality within two years. You know, in the past, I've talked about single-role paramedics, and we've gone back and forth at the diocese about savings in the fire department, but Chief Loesch has come up with a plan of a partial BLS program. And city manager, I'd like to ask you for the analysis of that program, so that we can understand the savings from the chief of the fire department about what I think is a better way to go than single-role paramedics. He's actually got a much more comprehensive plan that I see a lot of potential in, and some potential savings. Actually, all of the 27 recommendations that you brought forward have viability, and as you said, there can be some difficulty implementing, because it does require change, and it may require change in staffing. It will take political will to effect these changes, but our job is to safeguard our budget. That's why we're elected. We're here to make wise decisions to spend taxpayer money with the best efficacy that we can. And I think that you've created a blueprint here that is important. City manager, I have one more thing that I'm particularly interested in, and I've called for before, and it's item number 14 on the strategy list, to analyze the cost of the CWTA, which we have not yet done, although I've called for it, and I know that our city staff say that this is costly to us. But I want to know a number. And since it's part of the recommendations here, I think it's a very important thing to come up with. You know, I won't go all 27 items in a row, but those are big ones. You know, the business operations tax, certainly our staffing, and the analysis of a couple of these things. But managed competition is something that I think we need to pay attention to. Now, as far as getting rid of binding arbitration, that's an even heavier political lift, and I don't presume that this body would even consider that unless we face a real recession and we start dipping into our economic uncertainty reserve. At that point, we might have the will to pursue that. But at some point, if we're actually going to get after our deferred maintenance, we're going to have to tackle that issue. We're going to have to tackle all of these issues to maintain our fiscal health moving forward. Those are my comments for now, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Manager. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Councilman Shneur.
Thanks, Mayor. I'll be brief. So I did remember the fourth piece. That's my oops moment, right? So, which is collective bargaining. So I think as we slice this up and come back to the council, thinking about whether this can be done administratively, whether it's a council decision, whether it would require collective bargaining, and whether it would require a vote. You could throw, do we need statewide legislation in there as well? And then also, cutting it with short, medium, and long term. So my recommendation here as a next step, and again, I think this is a lot of great information, we could ask kind of scattershot questions here, which I don't know how far that's going to get us today, but I know everybody has their own questions. But, Mr. City Manager, what I would like is for you guys to take this, work with the auditor, kind of do those cuts about how we divide this up, and then come up with a plan for how the council can take it. I don't think we do it all at once. Maybe we do kind of the things that you can do first, or however you think is the best way, and schedule out over the next couple of months how we can get after these issues. I don't want to pay any of them short shrift, and I feel like if we try to do it all in one meeting, or two meetings, that's not going to work. Whether we do a couple more workshops as we go forward, I'd be open to any of those things, whether we use the Budget Committee, however that works best. But I think it's really up to you to do an analysis. And, you know, I don't want to spend tremendous amount of time on things that just aren't feasible, that we're not going to get to. And we may want to farm out some of them. If some of them require votes, maybe those go to the Budget Committee to talk about what that would look like. Maybe some of them go to law and ledge, I don't know. But we'd look to you to recommendations of how best to get after them. And to management partners and to our city auditors, I think you did a great job. As the mayor said, we need to get after a lot of this, so I don't want to take a lot of time doing all of this. Maybe you can give us, come back at our next meeting with a timeline and a proposal of how you want to go after these items.
Okay, Councilman Carr.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, managing partners, I think you did a great job on this. I'm looking at this as a roadmap. Here are possible things that you can consider, and as we do the analysis on them, some of them may prove fruitful, and some may not be fruitful for us to pursue. There's certainly lots of trade-offs between overtime and FTEs, for example. Where do you make that balance? Some of these clearly fall into the bailiwick of the city manager to pursue, to look at, to see if it makes sense, and to implement the savings recommendations. I would look for the city manager to do that himself. Some clearly fall within the purview of the council. Do we want to pursue a bot, for example? Do we want, is there some legislation we want to pursue? And I agree with Jay that we should schedule those at the appropriate committee and come back to the council for a full discussion of those issues, that the council must take action on. I don't think we need a lot of discussion on the things the city manager can actually implement. But I do have just two short questions. On the bot, is that a 50% vote or 2/3 vote? City attorney, can you answer that? If we were to increase the bot, is that a 50% or 2/3 vote?
That's a general fund tax, right? Yeah, so it's just a 50%.
50% tax. And Don, can you help me understand, we already get utility tax money from S M U D. No, we don't? Yes, we do? How does a franchise fee differ from that?
So, good afternoon, Lani Milstein, Assistant City Manager. So we have utilities, PG&E, Southern California Edison, those big investor-owned utilities are required to pay franchise fees to jurisdictions where they do business in order to provide for certain measures of upkeep to the right of way, stuff like that. We don't get We don't get that from SMD right now because SMD has explicit legislation that prevents that, and so we would have to change the legislation to do that. We have made a decision internally, and it was done, if you, for those of us who have done the historical recessionary history look back during one of our recessions, to charge our own utilities a franchise fee. And that is one of the schedules you'll see in our book, what our internal utilities are paying as a franchise fee. We took the measure, that utility tax that Councilmember Harris referred to, the 11% general tax, was the franchise fee that our water, wastewater, solid waste, and storm drainage, thank you, used to pay, and it was converted to that 11% general tax. So, we get a franchise fee from parking. We get a franchise fee from a couple of other funds that are still a franchise fee.
When SMD raises their rates, do we get a windfall?
When SMD raises their rates, we get that through the 7.5% utility users' tax.
So, we collect the utility users' tax?
But we don't get a franchise fee.
A franchise fee? That was my question. Thank you. So, again, I think there are some things that are clearly within the City Manager's bailiwick, and there are some things that the council has to consider. So, I agree with Jay that we should put those in the right, for the council considerations, put those in the right committee or bring them up to a workshop or committee of the whole, let the whole council discuss it, and then give direction. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Carr. Councilmember Gueda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate all the staff's work on this. I think the number-one recommendation that I would want to see us move forward with is what Councilmember Chenier had brought up immediately after he forgot what he was mentioning, which was collective bargaining. And I think, you know, the majority of our costs are with our people, our human capital. So, we, I think we need to start a early conversation with all our different collective bargaining units about, you know, what the outlook is. The, you know, the numbers here are pretty telling about what it looks like in the future. And so, we have to go into this with a strong coordinated effort with all our employees. And I want to make it more so than just our employees because our employees are also our constituents and our residents. I mean, I speak to a number of our city employees who frequent the Tally Donut Shop and work in solid waste or in the Parks Department and other departments of our city, and they're concerned about the outlook as well. What happens when we do end up in a tough economy, and what does it mean for their families and their livelihoods, many of whom are generational Sacramentoans? So, I think I want to start off with that part there. It's like, what is, Mr. City Manager, the City Auditor, and our finance staff, is what's going to be our method of communicating early, not just when a contract is up, but early to start looking at our process improvement? The, a couple of the things that I want to highlight here, there, I agree also on the fact of, let's parcel this out. I think it's also unfair to members of the public, members of our employees who are going to come here, and there are multiple items that are up, and I don't know if we give them the proper amount of time and due diligence to respond to the issues if we're putting everything at once. So, I think breaking every issue out in its respective area, I think it'll help us find better solutions. Second, there are some things that I think we should be moving forward quickly on. I think things as basic as implementing energy savings and figuring out efficiencies. That was one of the recommendations that you brought up. I mean, I think it falls in line with many of the values and the Climate Change Commission that the council has supported, the Mayor's Council, Mayor's Commission here as well, of things that we can do. I personally also would like to see some clarity on why there's this large discrepancy on the vacant positions. When it comes to both vacant positions and also the question of overtime, you know, I'd like to be able to see some clarity on that. On the issue of overtime, particularly when it relates to public safety, but in general, all overtime here, I want to make sure we're also coming back with, what does this mean to the service delivery? You know, we're trying to address in certain areas response time to issues, whether it's an officer responding to a call or whether it's code officer or solid waste responding to a 3-1-1 report of illegal dumping. There, I want to make sure that, at the end of this, we're not just looking at the red line as well, but we're also looking at what is the service delivery that we need to maintain. So, I think when this comes back to us every time, it's like, what is that impact? I think I saw the graph there that had, if we maintained a 7% vacancy, everything looked pretty rosy, you know? But sure, that may look rosy on the financial documents, but maybe it's not going to look too rosy over, you know, in the communities that need the services. So, I want to make sure that we're looking at that point of view. A couple of these issues of right sizing our business model, whether it's the business operation tax or whatnot, I think looking at that and making sure that we're also doing cost recovery is important. And then, the other issue that I wanted to also bring up was, we need to be also mindful of what some of these changes affect some of our working families, the folks that are on the lower end of the pay scale. And I'll bring up parking services, for example. You know, I know that there's a recommendation to look at increasing parking or collecting parking on, say, Sundays. Well, on Sundays, the people who are coming downtown to the employment sector from maybe the, for example, in my council district in the south area, are janitors who are coming to clean the buildings, there are maintenance folks, there are retail folks, or folks who are working in the retail industry and whatnot. And so, what is the cost impact? Because parking is always a regressive fee. It affects most of those in that area. So, we need to be mindful of those types of effects. Because at the end of the day, if we don't have an efficient city, then we don't have a city that can deliver its resources. But I also want to make sure that we're taking, what do those impacts mean for those that have the least on their margin? So, with that, I think there's a lot more to do. I want to thank, this is just, I think, scratching the surface, and I probably could go on with a couple more of those, but I'll leave it there for right now, Mr. Mayor, and appreciate all the hard work.
Thank you very much. Putnam, Councilmember Ashby. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I think it's good for a city to look at these types of efficiencies every once in a while. This is, I've been here nine years, and this is the second time that we have done this in that period of time with the same company. And some of the things are similar from last time that either didn't happen or weren't appropriate at that time, might be worth looking at this time. Some of them, just in a city like Sacramento, don't work for a variety of reasons, and I think some of those are still in here. And I think it might be worth a City Manager kind of going back and looking at what happened last time when we looked at some of these, and whether or not those pitfalls have changed, circumstances have changed, or politics have changed that would allow us to move some dialogues forward that didn't move forward last time. Why not, you know, at least learn from our own mistakes here? I'm okay with an overarching conversation that includes the suggestions. There are several items in there that, for me personally, I wouldn't support ever, and there are some that I think are great ideas, and many and most, I think, we just need more information. So, I would totally agree with my colleagues, Councilmember Chenier and Gueda, who said, more information, let's kind of look at them, pull them apart a little bit more. We're going to give ourselves a chance to have people that are interested in those topics come in and talk to us about what they mean to them. For me, I think, you know, we have to not compromise our number-one job here, which is to run a city and have strong parks and public safety, and just, I want to always understand what the implications will be on those values that we have. I want to value our employees. So, I don't want to choose any strategies that make our employees feel devalued or have to compete for their jobs. I don't think that's fair or right. Vacancies and the BOT, I would love to have more information on what that means and how we can do it, and who's impacted, what the impacts would be to our community and to our staff. And I think on each of these, it's also very important that we understand from our Budget Department where the fees, funds, or savings would go, because several of these items are not general fund items. So, we could save a bunch of money, and that's great and everything, but then it goes into a utility fund or some other solid waste fund and doesn't ever make its way back to the general fund. And so, we need to understand if those are areas where we're trying to find savings or if that is not helpful to us. I think marijuana is an item not heavily covered enough on here, and I think because of the audit that we had from the Auditor's Office, from Jorge recently, that told us how much money we're not collecting, and then also, we have this upcoming audit, I think there ought to be more discussion around where we need to tighten our belt on marijuana, where we're collecting or not collecting and should be collecting more, and how we prioritize that. For me, collective bargaining is a nonstarter, and, which leads me to the next point, which is on all of these items that are like managed competition or collective bargaining that really have strong, strong impacts on our labor unions, but particularly like our waste haulers. We need to understand what would be necessary for us to even make that happen because those items have to be negotiated. They're not something that can unilaterally be done by this council. So, before we have every waste hauler in Sacramento in here telling us, please don't put us through managed competition for our jobs, first of all, we should understand that any savings wouldn't come to the general fund, and second of all, that that's a negotiated item for them. So, I mean, those are the types of conversations I think we should have before we run ourselves through that gauntlet. And then, I think we should look at everything through the optic of what's required to achieve the goal, where the fees, funds would go, and what impacts would be realized for our community and our staff before we take those positions. And then, for me, there are two items that stick out, one that's not on there. But Mayor, you did ask us as council members, in addition to the Management Partners' report, to also think about what we could potentially bring forward in efficiencies, and here's one for you to maybe add to the list. Been a while since we looked at it, so I don't remember exactly how much savings it would have, but it is general fund. There is an opportunity to mitigate hazardous waste cleanup after traffic accidents through the fire department, billing only people's auto insurance where they have coverage to clean up the waste and spills of hazardous materials that happen in our city. It does offset costs. It is not included in the Management Partners' report. I think it should be considered. I know there's a study out there somewhere that shows us what it would save. I can't remember now, but I know it was well over $1 million, might have been a couple million. And of course, it would require some more discussion about impacts and all of that, but Mayor, that is one that is not on here that I think could potentially help us get us to our goal. And then, the last one is something I also talked to the mayor about, and I just have a personal interest in, and I would imagine Councilmember Gueda might want to be a part of the conversation, too. And that is, if we were to do the Sunday parking and to charge for Sunday parking, first of all, what would that look like? How many people would be negatively impacted? Is it worth it? And if we determine that it is, could we potentially follow the San Francisco and St. Louis city models, St. Louis Treasurer's Office and San Francisco Treasurer's Office, to create the college savings plans? Now, we put a small amount of money into college savings plans, but Mayor, you have made it your goal here to invest back into impoverished neighborhoods and particularly to pour into kids.
Please.
And you and I both made a promise on Measure G that we would find ways, we would seek out ways to pour into the kids of Sacramento, particularly those left most behind. And I would be quite interested in looking at the revenue generated, and I've spoken with Matt about this, Ironman, and I've spoken with the auditor about this, and Mayor has spoken with your team about this. I would love to know, when you come back, City Manager, what it would look like for us to take that Sunday revenue and pour it into the kids of Sacramento by way of a college savings plan, like the St. Louis model or the San Francisco model. Those are my comments.
Very good. Good ideas. Councilman Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that also, I'd like to see some emphasis, or in fact, more emphasis, put on the opportunity around illegal dumping and the cost that it inflicts on our city and our general fund, our solid waste departments, and would like to also ask the City Manager, in addition to the City Auditor, to look at a model of increased fees charged to those that we catch illegally dumping in our city, because I think it has, it's kind of a multiplier effect. I think as we leave trash unattended to in our community, it disincentivizes and turns people away from Sacramento, certain areas that want to invest. It also taxes our city services. When they can be out doing more productive things, they have to come. And oftentimes, people leave trash in areas, and, you know, our city staff won't know unless they get a call to 3-1-1 or somebody calls in. So, the trash could sit literally in certain parts of our city for days, weeks, or maybe even months, and I think it has a negative impact. And I also think, particularly in light of what's going on with this new virus that's happening, and you leave trash unabated, and you have, unfortunately, we have a lot of unhoused people. I think this could also further complicate the city and force some unintended or additional expenses and taxation on our revenue that we may not have even thought about. And so, I think all of those things combined should be looked at, and I am one to, you know, and I want to bring forth an ordinance amendment that would increase the penalties to people that are caught illegally dumping in our city. And so, I want to ask the City Manager to, and staff, to work with my staff and any others on the council that are interested in the same thing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for the input. A couple of last comments. I just kind of want to state my principles with this large list because it is a laundry list, and we did ask for everything. We didn't exclude anything. For me, I always believe, and it's been my lifelong commitment, to uphold the sanctity of the collective bargaining process. It's vital to me, as I know it is to other members. The other thing, while I think it is an appropriate question for the city to sometimes ask whether or not a particular function is best suited to the public or the private sector, I do not want to participate in anything that has any city employee either losing a job and/or losing their pay and benefit status. That's so. There may be ways we can deal with some of those things, but the thing that strikes me about the report is that if you stay away from those two boxes, if you will, there is still plenty of savings to be had here. I would like us strive to get, I would like us to strive to try to get to $30 million a year, and if we ended up with 15 or 20 a year, it would be a big victory. And there are both expenditure efficiencies but also revenue efficiencies, as you have pointed out. And so, Jay laid out, I think, a very good process. Let us get to ground on this vacancy question, which I think is really crucial, and understand why it is, and it's a good thing, that we have fund balance most every year, at least during the better economic times. Let's take these other ideas. Some of them are really low-hanging, for like, energy savings. I mean, really, we are trying to lead the region and the state on climate here. Why wouldn't we aggressively adopt all of that and see if we can come back with $30 million worth of doable recommendations? So, if the council's okay with us all working together, and everybody inputs, of course, but we set up a schedule, a timeline, and a process, and we come back and we tackle this one by one, but maybe several chunks at a time, I think we can meet our goal here. And we need Management Partners, obviously, to thank you, to continue to be engaged, to reconcile some of the differences between the city finance staff and your report, and maybe it is a point-in-time issue, as you described, but let's understand this so that we can make some clear decisions with a common set of facts. All right? City Manager, is that all right? Okay. Okay. Good. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it. Let's move on to the next item on the agenda. And that is... Oh, this is. Item 28.
Unpersoned aircraft.
Unpersoned aircraft.
Unmanned aircraft systems.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, and City Manager. Winford Day Leon, Chief Building Official for the Community Development Department, Building Division. I, along with representatives from police, fire, and utilities, are excited to present this item to you. We have collaborated this information as a team, and what I'd like to do, first of all, is introduce, or have each representative come up and introduce themselves.
So, good afternoon. I'm Mike Hutchins, Lieutenant, Metro Division.
You know what? I'm going to take a timeout here, because we have one of our leaders in the community here. There were no speaker slips up here that I saw, Fabrizio, so please have a seat. Thank you. We'll get right to you, Mr. Sasso. We did not vote on the prior item. It was just direction, but I'm sorry. You're an important leader in our community. We want to hear from you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Councilmembers, good afternoon. Fabrizio Sasso, Sacramento Central Labor Council, AFL-CIO, over 100 union affiliated with the Sacramento Central Labor Council, representing 170,000 union members, including a lot of the employees here in the city. It's really not all that surprising, the report that the council received today. I foreshadowed this at an April 2019 budget hearing, that there'd be a lot of recommendations about outsourcing. And I want to thank the mayor for saying that that is not our intent here. But there are a number of alarming recommendations that I just want to caution all of us as we start to have discussions about some of these items, and really think about the human impact. And thank you to Councilmember Gara and Ashby for suggesting this, just really thinking about the human impact that some of these changes will be, that if we implement some changes, especially managed competition, which is another, it's a fancy word for outsourcing and privatization, to really think about what that does to the morale of our city employees. I know each of you support a worker's right to strike, and removing binding arbitration may actually test that. So just be wary about that. Looking at our community workforce training agreement, again, let's think about what good our CWTA is doing, especially in those impoverished neighborhoods where we draw a lot of the workforce from. You know, these are Sacramento values that I'm talking about. We fought for Measure U, and we still believe in the mayor and council's vision for Measure U. But let's not lose sight of keeping our promises to our employees, and let's restore city services to where they once were. So thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Thank you, of course. I know, we just missed it. It's okay. Let's resume where we were. Thank you for your flexibility. We appreciate it.
So, good afternoon again. Mike Hutchins. I'm a lieutenant with Metro Division, and oversee both unmanned and unmanned aircraft programs.
Scott Williams, Assistant Chief with the Fire Department.
Bill Busey, Director of Utilities. I'm here on behalf of Doug Henry, who is our storm drainage ONM manager. He's the one that's done the bulk of the work on this for the Department of Utilities.
Also, I'd like to introduce or recognize Kelly Sherfy, who really helped us put all this information together. She's been viable to providing this PowerPoint and the information that we gave to the council briefings last week and the week before. So we feel that this forward-thinking, innovative technology allows our city departments to not only enhance operational efficiencies and capabilities, but it also allows us to increase employee safety. Our city departments are either using or exploring the use of unmanned aircraft system, which is UAS, which is also known as unmanned aerial vehicles, UAV, but the common word or term that's used is drones. So for this presentation, we will refer to them as UAS, and each department will provide a few things for you today. And number one, an overview of how each department would like to use this technology; two, the current status of each UAS program; and three, the coordination effort that we are all or will take place. So with that, I will introduce Mike to start his presentation on the police side.
Thank you. So the Police Department has two different components to our unmanned aircraft program, and they are for indoor and outdoor flight. I'll talk about the indoor flight first. And we're passing around two different aircraft up there. One is the small micro indoor, and the larger of the two is for outdoor use. Micro aircraft used for indoor flight for searching residences, for people who potentially are armed or who are noncompliant with the police. And what it really allows us to do is another layer of de-escalation. It aids in officer safety and community safety to afford us both some time and distance in prolonging human-on-human contact with somebody who might not be cooperative with the Police Department. The second, larger, outdoor device is used for area searches, for scene assessment, has the ability to check rooftops and backyards. And we will be deploying a number of those in our patrol division to specially-trained officers, who will have a small kit with one of those devices in it. So the idea behind it is, if we have a call where somebody runs on foot and flees from the officers, they can quickly, within a minute or two, deploy that device and begin to search, whether it be in a large, open area or a field, as opposed to going through backyards or searching on foot. So the Police Department has existing policy on manned aircraft operations, and all operational flights will be under the authorization of the on-duty watch commander. And we take the community privacy very seriously, so we will not use the aircraft for either random surveillance or for normal patrols. With that, we also will only operate the aircraft where officers already have a legal right to be. All the video that's taken from aircraft will be retained pursuant to our existing policy for video retention. And I mentioned, all pilots will be licensed by FAA, and they'll all hold a remote pilot certificate. These aircraft really allow the officers to make observations from a safe perspective and a safe distance, but yet to get an up-close view of it. Currently, we're using the micro aircraft indoors and also the larger aircraft for outdoor flights. And we have a short demonstration here of one of the small indoor aircraft that has been featured recently on local media. It weighs just a couple ounces, and it does have a built-in camera on there that allows the operator to view what the device is seeing as it flies. And you see the operator in the back corner over here, and he's wearing a set of goggles that allows him, he even waves back at you, that allows him to see you. Great. So thank you for that.
So for community development, we are planning to use our initial drone to do solar panel inspections. As some of you might know, the state code required that all new residential homes built after the first of the year does require solar panels to be installed on their rooftops. So this element will provide us some additional safety to my building inspectors, so they will not have to climb up on the roof. So this is kind of what we're pushing early. And the clarity of the cameras on these units are very, very good. So what we plan to do is we're going to bring the UAS to the site. We're going to take it out of the case, fly it up, do the visual look of the work that was done by the contractor. And if everything looks good, we're going to pass the inspection, we're going to fly the drone down, and we're on our way. If there is a correction because of an attachment issue or a connection issue, we will take a picture of it and give that picture to the contractor, saying, here's what we saw. You need to make that correction, and call us back out when you're done. We won't be videotaping the flight at all, so from a concern about privacy from the next-door neighbors, there won't be that issue. The other thing we will do when we come out and do the inspection for that day is we're going to hand out a door flyer to each of the neighbors to let them know that we were here, and this is what we are doing. We do plan on expanding the inspections via the UAS with doing roof inspections and also doing some inspections on our mid-to-high-rise buildings for exterior components. So as the policies and procedures, our current status is we do have a policy and procedures developed and approved. We will also operate under compliance of FAA Part 107. We have currently one operator that is licensed with a second one pending. And, let's see, so we'll maintain all the certificates as required. The equipment that we're planning to use is a middle-size UAS, which I believe Scott brought up there. So it's the second, the bigger of the two. And we're, our plan is to use, to go ahead and start doing these solar panel inspections starting tomorrow. We're ready. So with that said, I'd like to pass it on to Scott Williams. Or, let's see, sorry. Bill Busey.
Thank you. So utility uses will include being able to inspect critical infrastructure, including especially hard-to-find assets, levee creek and channel surveys, plant facilities inspections, pre- and post-flood season observations, high-water event assessments, and as appropriate, even using these to inspect levees during inclement weather within the limitations of the drones. We're confident that our use of the UAS will provide operational efficiencies, a safer work environment, and more detailed assessment of our critical infrastructure. We estimate, for instance, that general levee inspection completed with the UAS can be done in approximately half the time that we're currently taking with our vehicles and by foot. As an example of the time that this might save, in 2019, we spent 300 hours inspecting the Sacramento River levee. Current status of this initiative is that draft policies and procedures are under review. One of three potential operators is certified. We have identified our equipment needs. We've started the process to plan for organized community outreach, and we are planning to begin critical infrastructure inspection with UAS this summer, summer of 2020. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mayor, Council, City Manager, Assistant Chief Scott Williams. Fire intends on using the UAVs or UASs for emergency responses in numerous ways. We have the unique ability, when there is a high-water event, we can work with utilities, with building departments, we'll be working with our Fire Prevention Bureau, and with emergency response. We will be working hand-in-hand, sometimes with law enforcement and other fire agencies within the city. Usually doing the large fires that we've had over the last several years, fire use UAVs to cover areas that would normally take three to four months for damage assessment, they were able to do in a couple of days. So nationwide, fire at state and federal levels have started to implement these uses. As with fire investigations, we have large fires, sometimes on the parkway or in areas that we can normally get to and we can investigate it, so we'll be able to fly these aircraft into those areas. And then, again, with fire prevention and inspections, just as simply as community development is, we'll be able to get to areas where we would normally have to rent, say, a 50-foot scissor lift to get to some areas, like, say, with inside Golden One, we can now fly these aircraft indoors and do those same types of inspections relatively quickly and easy and safely. Currently, our policy is under department review, just as police is doing. We will fly under our COA, which is a certificate of authorization, which allows us, for public safety, to fly in different situations, like at night and over citizens during special events. And we also will be flying also under the Part 107, which is the license for pilots to fly. In addition to that, we have the one operator, and we will definitely maintain the pilot certification, just seen with PD, with the certification, which has to be done every two years. Also with PD, we're going to be flying the one aircraft that we passed around for in, we will not be doing indoor operations, but unless we have to go into areas where we've actually used them on fire scenes, to get into buildings that have collapsed that we couldn't get to, and be able to determine the fire cause and origin. And currently, we participate with approximately 10 to 12 other agencies with law and fire. There's approximately, I want to say, 75 pilots in area and over 100 aircraft, and we all have been participating over the last year and a half with training on special events and other agency interactions that we've done. So with closing, I'll turn back to the mic.
Thank you. So this technology really is a huge step ahead for us as a city, both in efficiency, but also in employee safety and safety for the community. We have formed a working group with the four city departments who plan or are operating unmanned aircraft. And on top of that, police and fire both belong to a regional working group comprised of public safety, where we share both training ideas, local best practices, national best practices. And of the four groups, we all operate very similar equipment, so should there be the need locally for any kind of a large event or large disaster, we could quickly come together and work cooperatively with the aircraft and personnel that we have. So we thank you for your time, and with that, we'll open up to questions.
Thank you. Do we have any public testimony?
See, I had Mr. Copeland sign up to speak, but I believe he's left.
He's not here. Okay. Then let's turn it over to the Council Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Mike, I actually do have a question. But first, I wanted to thank Kelly, yourself, Win, Scott, and Bill for a great presentation about what I think is a great tool to create safety for our officers and firefighters, but also for the general public in terms of levee safety, which I consider a really high use for drones. So my question is this, you know, we're looking at our protection of critical infrastructure ordinance, and part of that is dealing with levees, and we have a large homeless population on our levees. Would there be privacy concerns flying drones over the levees to inspect for incursions? Would there be privacy concerns that could be expressed by the homeless population?
I don't believe so. And as I mentioned earlier, we will only fly the aircraft where our officers have the legal right to already be, out in public spaces, whatever they can see if they were on foot, would be the same thing that we would see from an unmanned aircraft from a short-distance overhead.
Okay. I appreciate that answer. I think that this tool can really help us with a lot of safety issues moving forward, so I'm pretty excited about the program. And actually, I expressed to you that I might even go ahead and get a license to fly these things, so who knows? I might have a second career. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Geta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd also thank you for a great presentation, and, you know, this is my tech engineering side that really sees like the exciting part of this and the benefits of this, particularly to... side that really sees like the exciting part of this and the benefits of this, particularly like Councilmember Harris, my council district has both sides of the American River levees, and I think the benefit to the general public and their ability to be able to quickly assess and manage our infrastructure, this is going to be a huge, significant tool for our public works folks. I do have some questions, though, for, one, on the procurement side. Do we procure any of these in our area? Are there any manufacturers here? I know there were a couple entrepreneurs who started some of these UAS companies who went to our local universities here and have put these up as some ideas. Are we looking at that?
So we have looked at that locally. While we have selected a non-local company, it was based on operational need, efficiency, reliability of equipment, proven in the marketplace, and the company that we've selected currently has about 80 to 85% of the public safety and public market that's out there, based on cost efficiency and ease of use and the safety record.
Okay. No, I appreciate that, and obviously, we want to get the right tool, but I think if we're talking about from our previous conversation, how are we going to look at spurring up or looking at more economic activity? I mean, trying to tap into our local talent and see, could there be market signals that we start sending from all different parts of our departments, public works, fire, community development, any of these areas, so that we look at, hey, Sacramento, maybe the region is looking at these as a market direction? I'd like to be able to see that we also do that here with our local engineers and manufacturers. So just, that's just more of a comment, you know, when we look at procurement, how can we do that locally? Second, on the, I appreciate that we won't be recording when we're looking at cameras in homes or at the rooftops of homes, let me be clear for that, that we will not be using the camera, and we're using the photo option to take those. But for, when it comes to the use from the police department, will the video recording follow, fall under the same body cam policy that we have? Or have you, has the police department looked at that? Because my understanding, this is, some of the opportunities, particularly the smaller UAS, is intended to go in and in situations where it provides safety for both the public and the officers. How is that policy working out between this and our current policy?
Yes, sir. I'll touch, first of all, on your comment, and then I'll follow up with a question. So while we have looked at local within the region companies, most of those are still in the very early stages and are not yet to production. We're certainly eager to find a local vendor that hopefully can provide what we need for our local use. Secondly, based on privacy, as I mentioned, for the police perspective, this, we will record the video that we take, but to back up a little bit, as I mentioned, we will only have the aircraft fly places that our officers have a legal right to be already, whether that be something in plain view or by search warrant, that we already have the legal right or some exigency where we have the urgent need to be there. And all that video will be retained pursuant to our existing video retention policy.
Very good. Thank you. And, you know, just to also, I mean, I know that that's an important point for some of the members in our community, but I also want to remind the members of the community that also, that adds to the amount of time we have to do to review and record and maintain those records as well. But I think it is important that we, that we maintain that standard policy.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I agree. If I can touch on one more piece of that, the, it's important also, and the messaging we'll do out of the community is that while the aircraft may be flying near someone's house or near their property, that doesn't necessarily mean that the camera of the aircraft is looking at their house. And the flight data software that we will use, we'll be able to go back later and show exactly where the aircraft was and what direction the camera was pointed, and all that video will be retained.
Good point. Winford, do you mind coming up real quick? Because I think this is important, that you highlight this as well. When the UASs are going to be flying over the levees, you also have the capability of maintaining the camera position so that it is also only focused on the levees and not into communities. Is that correct?
Yes, I believe that's going to be the intention of utilities, Bill.
That's correct.
Good. That's good. Well, good. Well, thank you very much. You know, we're, it's a new thing, and we'll learn more as we go. Thank you.
Fabulous. Just, I mean, if we can save lives and solve difficult issues using modern technology without invading privacy, I think it's a wonderful thing. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, appreciate it, all of you. Excellent. All right, that is the agenda here. Now, remember, members, we have a very brief subsequent agenda at a separate meeting, if you will. So this isn't the end, but for this meeting, let us hear council ideas and questions, and then we'll do public comment on items not on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor may read into the record, board and commission appointment to the Sacramento Arts Culture and Creative Economy Commission, Cecily Hastings is being recommended by District Three. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So let's hear from the members. Councilman Scheneer.
Thank you, Mayor. Two things for the City Manager, or I'll give it to you, it's fine. One is, when we changed such a back of resale licensing, retail licensing requirements to 1,000 feet, there were a couple of folks who were in the middle of their CUP processes, one of them in my district, and just would like to ask the City Manager to take a look and see if others are in that process. These folks did a remodel based on what they thought they could do, and we kind of changed the rules on the game as we went forward. So we'll show you that, and I'll give you the name. Then also, on the folks who are unhoused, this was actually brought up a little bit. I don't know what we're doing around the coronavirus with our homeless population. I have a lot of worries there, and understand that we're working with the county and that they are taking the lead overall, but I want to make sure that we've got that covered as well.
Councilman Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to urge the council to adopt a resolution that I'm going to bring forward to urge the federal government to stop the deportation of Hmong, Mian, and Laotian refugees. Some of you may know that the states of Minnesota and has taken a really active position in this issue, and Sacramento or California has the biggest population of Hmong, Mian, and Laotians in the country. And there's a lot of concern about the deportation. Know, we had a resolution previously that impacted people of Hispanic descent and support for them, and I think it's appropriate that we look at and, if properly worded, adopt a resolution to ask the federal government to change their legislation in regards to deportation. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, on that point, maybe if also our city attorney could, because our standing resolution, I don't think was geographic or ethnic specific, but I think the resolutions we passed may address that and already give us some authority on that. So I'd like to work with you, Councilmember Warren, on that, because the Cambodian community also is being impacted by that same situation.
Very good. Thank you, both council members. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. This Saturday, on March 14th, marks the opening day for youth baseball in South Natomas and Northgate communities, so we're going to have a parade. It starts at Smythe Academy at 9:00 a.m. and proceeds up Northgate Boulevard, which will be closed to traffic, to Potomac, and then over to Rio Tierra Junior High School, where the opening pitches will be tossed out, and there'll be family activities for everybody, so we hope to see you there.
Thank you. I'm going to try. Councilman Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got some other efforts for you to try as well, as well as the entire community. Saturday, March the 14th, we'll have Pocket Girls Softball Opening Day. That'll take place at Carolyn Windsor Elementary School at 9:00 a.m., so bring your arm out there, and let's throw the opening pitch on that date. And then on the Friday, March the 20th, at 6:00 p.m., the JFK, John F. Kennedy High School Marching Band will have a Fiesta Night and a silent auction. It's going to take place at the Oaks Lodge Number Six on Riverside Boulevard. Food is being provided by Valeos, and tickets are available online at JFKennedyBand.com. $20 in advance and $25 at the door. And then, speaking of baseball, the Pocket Little League will have their opening day on Saturday, March the 21st, at 9:00 a.m. at the Conlon Youth Sports Complex. And we're not going to leave out our Scouts. The Lewis Park Scouts Volunteer Day will take place on Saturday, March the 28th, from 9:00 to 12:00 p.m. This will be the opportunity to help us spruce up a wonderful neighborhood, and all the equipment will be provided. That's Lewis Park Scouts Volunteer Day, Saturday, March the 28th. That concludes our announcements. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Geta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of announcements, more opportunities for you. The College Glen Little League Opening Day starts this Saturday, March 14th.
I can do it.
And you can join the parade early in the morning at 7:00 a.m., and we'll be going from the Rayleigh Shopping Center through College Greens in Glenbrook.
At what time is the first pitch?
The first pitch, look, we'll be starting at 9:00 a.m. at that point, so if not in the morning.
Maybe closer to 9:00 for me.
Closer to 9:00. But we'll have a wonderful parade and a great day for opening day. Project Create, Creating Pathways and Understanding, Pathways to Understanding, and a art project that links communities and community healing with art, will be on Saturday, March 21st, at 5:30 p.m. at the George Simp Community Center. This is one of those programs that was funded by our Creative Economy Grants, so come and enjoy this. Also, the Aggie Square Open House will be happening on Monday, March 23rd, at 5:30 p.m. at the Pine Tree House, 9249 Folsom Boulevard. So if anyone wants to come and learn more about that opportunity, express points of view or concerns, come and join us. And lastly, just to save the date, Tuesday, March 31st, is Cesar Chavez Day, and it's a day that many communities, schools, community organizations, will be hosting efforts, because Cesar Chavez Day is not only the day that we recognize the work of Cesar Chavez, more importantly, it's the day of community service. So, and we encourage anyone to be, to participate on that day. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Geta. Councilmember Carr.
And yet another opportunity for you.
I'm tired.
This Saturday, the 14th, at the Bonnie and Samuel Pennell Community Center, we're having our Fourth Annual Great STEM Summit. We get about 300 kids, this event is always sold out. Get about 300 kids, industry professionals. It's an all-day science, technology, engineering, and math summit. Believe it or not, when the kids leave the summit, they will be able to program a small car going around a table, just like the Tesla does, and staying between the lines. They learn how to clean water. They learn how to do 3D printing. It's an exciting event, and for those who haven't seen any part of it, I urge you to come out, even if you can only spend a two-minute, so just to look and see what these kids are learning in science, technology, engineering, and math. And industry experts from all over the region take part in this program. It is just a fantastic event, so we'll look to see you out there, Mr. Mayor.
What's the time again of that one?
That's 11 o'clock on Saturday, after you throw the first pitch.
I'm going to send my twin brother. Another brother, Daryl. I'll try. Councilmember Ashby.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a quick report out, but it might be of interest to you all, too. I went to Tennessee last week, actually came home at 1:00 in the morning on Monday, and then, of course, they had a tornado Monday night, so I felt really fortunate for my family and sad for Nashville. But the reason I was in Nashville was to help our library accept the Jerry Klein Award, and I just wanted you all to know that the Sacramento Public Library won the big national award this year. The public library associations, meaning all the public libraries from the whole country, they get together every other year and have a conference, and this is the first year that the group Jerry Klein has chosen one library in the whole country to give an award to, and it came with $250,000 that they get to put towards programming, and obviously, they'll put it towards literacy programs and the summer reading and all of that. But 100 libraries across the country, including the largest and some of the smallest, all applied, and Sacramento was selected. And so Rivka SASS and about, I don't know, about 20 other librarians from our region, many from the North Natomas Branch, a lot of folks who helped write the grant did so through an optic of honoring Amber, the librarian who passed away in my district, and so that was a big emphasis of this grant and how libraries heal together after tragedy. But it was a really great deal to watch our library receive this big award, and I was really honored to be there as part of it, and the city did pay for a portion of my travel, so I need to report out. But I also wanted you all to know that you have bragging rights on your Sacramento Public Library against all the other public libraries across the whole country. It was a really big deal and very exciting, and I was extremely happy for our library staff because they threw themselves into that and were rewarded. And you would also be, you know, happy to know that libraries from everywhere, Boston and Kansas City and Florida, all came to the Sacramento Assembly to sort of thank Rivka. She's very well-regarded amongst all the executives in libraries across the whole country, and that was very evident as well. So, good on them.
That's great. Thank you for reporting, and thank you for representing us there. Councilmember Hanson.
I also have a 1234 report. I was at a conference last week for the California Foundation for Environment and Economy related to housing, where I saw you, Mayor, so I'll include you in my report.
That's right.
And then I was also at the Yosemite Policymakers Conference for Local Government Commission, where we had a great attendance. I don't think Jeff was there, but none of our other colleagues were there, so it was wonderful. We got to hear from a lot of local leaders, including Mayor Licardo, who talked about some of his work around housing and homelessness.
Yes, very good. Thank you so much. All right, with the council's indulgence, we do have a public comment. I need to leave in a moment, but there's the second item, which is the boards and commissions. If we could open that meeting, I would appreciate that. Madam Clerk?
So we have one item on the 3 o'clock agenda. We'll call that to order at 4:25. It is confirmation of mayoral appointments to council standing committees and regional authorities, agencies, and committees, and I passed out an amended resolution at the dais.
Okay.
I can, if you wish. So the edits to the resolution on page two, section eight, Councilmember Jennings replaces Councilmember Scheneer on the Sacramento Public Library authority, and then on the same page, section two, council members that are appointed to the Budget and Audit Committee are Eric Aguera, Jay Scheneer, Rick Jennings, and Mayor Daryl Steinberg. Angelique Ashby was added in error and has been removed. I have a motion in the second.
There's a motion in the second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain. Thank you. We'll go back to the other meeting. Vice Mayor, if you don't mind, I just have to head off to the bay.
Thank you. So we have.
Thank you all.
Public comments for matters not on the agenda. I have six speakers. The first is Dwayne Nason, then Bruce Minster, then Russell Henley.
Mr. Mayor, is it possible you could stick around for my comment? I have a really unique homeless housing solution.
Okay.
I promise you've never heard of this before.
Great.
Sorry. Okay, guy. My name's Dwayne Nason. First off, good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name's Dwayne Nason. I'm the founder of Citizens Again. I'd like to share with you my plan for permanent supportive housing solution for the chronic homeless, and I'm hoping that I can start a discovery process with you and hopefully gain your support. My plan is for an all-inclusive, private city with all the services necessary for up to 150,000 high-needs population. It will have all the facilities and amenities of a city of that size, including a hospital, entertainment facilities, onsite jobs, job training, and educational service, and much more. And by building a single location, instead of having thousands of sites in the urban core spread across America, we can reach economies of scale, making it cheaper and quicker to build and provide more services than today's efforts. I estimate it'll take about 11 years to When we compare this to LA's $650,000 per unit costs, or Sacramento's $233,000 for the tough sheds, it's a big difference.
Did you say 11 years?
That's right, to plan and build. I have very extensive details on my website, and you can see everything right there.
I'll be happy to review it, okay? Thank you, sir.
It's taken three years to get this far.
I'm happy to, I'll tell you with me.
Okay.
Thank you.
On my website has a lot of information, has some insights from the homeless, gives their opinions and insights, and they love it. So, I just know the governor asked for some big, bold ideas, and this is about as big as it gets. So, I hope we can take this further. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bruce Minster.
I'm inviting the city to develop a campus ensemble of buildings to serve the homeless. The buildings may include a welcome center with an intake office and some public services, a services building with medical clinics, supportive services, and a men's and women's dormitory, a dining pavilion with a commercial kitchen, a sleeping pavilion for emergency shelter, a storage building for guest storage, and outdoor showers and restrooms. The property is at the corner of Marconi Avenue and Kenwood Street. It's about 10 acres, and it's about 100 steps from the light rail. Oh, and you all already own the property, it's city-owned. There's more information on my website, BruceMinster.com, about this project, and there's flyers. Very good, thank you.
My next speaker is Russell Henley, then Glenda Marsh.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor Harris and members of the council. My name is Russell Henley, I'm a longtime Midtown resident and advocate for public transit and bicycles. I'm also a member of the Sacramento Metro Advocates for Rail and Transit, or SMART, and today we'd like to comment on the STA Transportation Expenditure Plan, or TEP, and Mayor Steinberg's recent letter on that topic. I want to thank the mayor for his strong letter to the STA that reiterates what SMART and many others have been saying. The current TEP does not adequately address the existential threat of greenhouse gas emissions, climate change, and the need to reduce vehicles' miles traveled. I also want to thank Councilmember Hanson for floating a proposal at the last STA meeting to increase the TEP's share of funding for public transit to the level of the existing Measure A. Unfortunately, the rest of the STA did not support this. As I have pointed out previously, the current TEP does not meet the goal of this council's December 10, 2019 Resolution on Guiding Principles for Transportation Funding, and it does not meet the goals of the mayor's commission on climate change. Incorporation of the recommendations in the mayor's letter into the TEP and the related ordinance will help to better meet the intent of these two important policy benchmarks for the city. It's essential that both the expenditure allocation and the policies contained in the TEP achieve the goals of these city policies and those identified in the mayor's letter. The new Measure A will be in place for 40 years, so it's essential that the STA get it right with the TEP that is forward-looking, with a greater emphasis on public transit and active transportation, and not backward-looking, with an overreliance on polluting congestion-inducing automobiles. I recognize that there are critical unfunded needs right now for public transit, active transportation, and fixed-up-first priorities, but as a voter, I'd rather vote no on the current TEP proposal and wait for the STA to get it right in maybe two years or four years.
Thank you for your comments, your time is complete.
And vote on a matter that would be critically determinative for the next 40 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Glenda Marsh, then Bishop Chris Baker.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Glenda Marsh with Sacramento Metro Advocates for Rail and Transit, and SMART supports Mayor Steinberg's call for accountability to state mandates for greenhouse gas reductions and targets for our region, and by including these targets in the Sacramento Transportation Authority's expenditure plan. Such accountability will keep our county and our cities here competitive for transportation funding focused on projects that maintain our existing road and street infrastructure and increase transit service to the public, should voters approve the STA's proposed sales tax measure on the November 2020 ballot. As city councils members of the STA board have heard from public comment there, voters desire greater access to transit, smoother and decongested roads, and safe streets and sidewalks for biking and walking. SMART supports accountability in meeting state greenhouse gas reduction targets in our region in order to achieve these critical transportation improvements that meet the public's immediate needs. I ask our city council members on the STA board and the entire city council here to support the mayor's letter to the STA board, and don't flag, don't tire, we have to get to the finish line, and adding the state accountability for these state targets to the TEP is critical for the success of this measure and for delivering on transportation needs. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bishop Chris Baker, and then Bren or Brent Holdaway.
About 16 months ago, this was approved as a reentry services program, and they were given a lot of things to do to correct best practices. And on that date, you see there, March 18th, will be another day that they're opening it up to everybody, and for you all to come and look at the things that they are doing. And we have a lot of the formerly incarcerated individuals that has well succeeded, that has gotten jobs with the government, the state, the county, and working with Caltrans right now. So, I think we owe them a debt of gratitude to come and see what this program done for them, and I've stayed by their side for the last 16 months. I said, if you're going to put this in our community, I'm going to make sure you're doing the right thing. And since I've been there, I made sure they're doing the right thing. I walk in and I talk to the inmate, formerly incarcerated inmates, I've been to some of the adult schools they go to, and they're doing great, reunited with their families, marriages put back together, they're going to schools, talking to young men and women on how not to do what I did and don't make that mistake. So, I think if you can make it out there that day, that would be appreciative to see them, to see you come in and at least shake their hand and say, "Good job." Thank you, hope to see you there.
Thank you. And Brent Holdaway is our final speaker.
Can I say something to Bishop Baker?
Yeah. I'm actually a homeowner now, I was previously homeless for nine years.
Can you hold off just a second?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Carr.
Bishop, I just want to thank you for leading the charge on being the, looking at the advisory group, making sure that group is doing what it should be doing. As you know, when GEO went in, it was quite controversial. My whole community came out against it, and, but we looked at the site, we looked at what they were doing, we thought it was an appropriate activity. In fact, it was something that the community had asked for, and that is reentry programs. And this is a great reentry program, and it's been nothing but a plus for the community. This program is serving people who were already in the community anyway. They just had to go a long way to get the service. So, by your dedication, your perseverance, you have shown the people in the community that this type of program in the right location is a good thing for our community, and I appreciate your efforts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Carr.
Yes, Mayor, yes, sir. My name is Brent Holdaway, I'm 100% service-connected vet. I was homeless for nine years. I was able to apply my resources by, you know, basically seeing that, you know, from nothing, I have something now, you know, and I'm no longer dependent upon any state services. But what's happened is, is the city of Sacramento's come in and they filed a preliminary injunction against my property trying to take it from me, and they failed to recognize that I make my monthly payment through my direct deposit, which includes my mortgage and, you know, my insurances. I don't know what to do, I filed a response to them and this preliminary injunction, and I don't know where I stand now, but I know that they're continuing to harass me at my door, threatening to take my property, and I do have friends from the homeless community that come by and I feed them, I try to give them example that what I've done is applying myself, and in that, I was able to come off the street, and I think it's true with a lot of these homeless people, and they can apply themselves, they can. But why is it this cycle? I went through the program, you know, I graduated from Section 8 housing and purchasing my own home. Seems like I'm an example before, you know, the, you know, all this that's trying to help the homeless community, and now they're creating all these false assumptions because of the people that I have. I don't no longer have people coming by my house, nor do they reside there, other than myself. And I just, I don't know what to do at this point. I do have one individual that's in my garage that I rescued from being homeless, he's got some car vlass, he can't climb the stairs, he's got access to a kitchen refrigerator in the garage. I was going to have it converted to living quarters, but they put a lien against my property to where I can't qualify for heating and air conditioning program that would allow vent to be installed in the garage for him. But they're stating that, I don't know, I guess they're trying to keep this case open because I have a homeless person living in my garage, which he's perfectly comfortable with. He pays me $300 a month, and I don't know what to do with it. Is there any kind of grants available where perhaps they could help me with conversion of the garage?
Thanks for your testimony. The city attorney, can you provide any guidance or help for this individual with his legal issue? Okay, why don't you have a private conversation...
Okay, thank you.
...with our attorney's office and see if there's any way forward for you.
Vice Mayor Harris, I have no more speakers.
And Tom, did you want to get in on that conversation? Thank you very much. Do we have any other business?
I have no more business this evening.
Do we have council comments or suggestions? Seeing done, we are adjourned.